This is the Eastline Board of Selectmen meeting, regular meeting of December 2nd, 2020, via Zoom. We'll call the meeting to order. Additional agenda and consent calendar items? Are there any?
None.
Delegations? Anyone like to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening? To do that, you either just start speaking up, we'll recognize you, wave your hand, or you have an electronic hand, too. Give you one more, one more brief moment of time. And if there is no public delegation this evening, move to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 18th.
I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 18th, 2020, as submitted.
Mark Salerno, second.
Motion's been made, it's been seconded. Yeah, close that door, Mark. Any comments? Comments or corrections in the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Who's, who's just said that random aye?
I think it was Dan, did you just say aye?
I said aye.
I, I said aye.
I said any opposed, and I heard it, then I heard an aye. Okay, so I'm gonna assume everybody's a yes. Is there any opposed? Any, any abstain? Okay, then it's 6-0-0, that's how we'll record that vote. Consent calendar, Kev?
This is Kevin Serra. I'll move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of December 2nd, 2020, in the amount of $296.95.
I'll second.
Motion and second, it's fairly short consent calendar. Any comments, corrections? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, great. We have a fairly short agenda this evening, there's one, everything's, everything's important in what we do, but one, you know, significant item, and that is the first one, which is the authorization to transfer from the CNRE $19,118 for the communications tower. We've been, as you know and you remember, and I think most all of the Board of Selectmen this evening were sitting when we were presented with an opportunity to have a tower built in our town, free of charge, and we would charge a nominal fee for a lease. But at the end, we would get the top section of the tower, and we could put a, an antenna on that. And that, believe it or not, was four or five years ago. There'd been some delays with construction, we had a, we had, we, our obligation was to install a road that got to the tower site. And there's some other things that slowed the project down. COVID didn't help at all this year, that's for sure. We're, we're now at the point where the tower's built, and they're ready to top it off with one of our antennas, and we need the necessary antenna to go on the, the tower, and run the cables down, and all the manpower that goes along with that. We had put a temporary tower up, and still have it, at the solar field, way up on, is that Upper Walnut?
That's up on just Walnut Hill.
On Walnut Hill Road, thank you. And that still serves us, it doesn't serve us to the degree this new tower will. And as you remember, before we even put the temporary tower up, we had a very, very dangerous situation where our first responders were not able to communicate on the north side of town. It has gotten much better, but it was still not at 100%, and we are in desperate need to finish this tower off, and we're taking $19,118 from CNRE to do that. Mike Finkelstein, Chief Finkelstein is here, along with one of the lieutenants, that'd be Dana Jezerski, and to give us any details and to certainly answer any questions. Mike kind of took this over, as we, as we remember Dick, Dick Morris was our unofficial IT guru slash tower guy slash communication, and we lost, we lost a significant part of our internal knowledge, institutional knowledge, when Dick retired, and, and Chris went on to another career as well, so Chris Taylor. So we kind of, thank you, Mike, first of all, you know, you have enough to do as chief of police and emergency management, but you know, this is critically important to your men and women that serve our town, as well as all the first responders. Mike, what can you do to fill in the blanks of how I've set the table here?
So, so I, I thank you for that, and obviously, you know, much of the discussions that originated with this predated my being here. When, when Richard Morris presented this for the final presentation of the Board of Selectmen in 2017, to get the lease signed, you know, he even discussed, when I look back through the minutes, of this being a decades-long project to try to improve the radio communications throughout town. So I think it's important, first of all, to understand, these communications are for police, fire, EMS, public works, school buses, so it really encompasses all the communications within the town of Eastlime. That northern part of town, with its topography, the hilly nature, certainly needs a tower, which is dedicated to that area. Believe it or not, too, with the topography, that tower also assists us in the Giant's Neck section, because of how the elevations of the town are, are working. And this is part of that, this final piece of the project, to really try to get us the best possible radio communications on a system that we have. So as the First Selectman said, part of this project, and part of that deal that was, that was created, was a temporary tower was, was erected at the solar field. That has served the town fairly well, even though it's not the most ideal situation. This tower, because of its height and the permanency of it, generator backup, et cetera, will certainly be that last piece to helping us. I want to point out, you know, certainly that while we're gonna end up having to pay $19,000 for this expenditure, to erect a new tower for the town of Eastlime, dedicated to us or built by us, you're talking about $170,000 to $200,000 expenditure. So certainly, this deal with Marcus Communications saved the town a tremendous amount of money, but also, you know, assists them in their, in their communications vendor, as one of the communications vendors for the state. So the, the way that this, this is actually, in the quotation that's given to you, Marcus Communication owns the tower, our communications vendor, which is Utility Communications, will provide the equipment for Marcus to place onto the tower. And again, that equipment will service all of our radio frequencies. Star Computer then has to come in and do some computer configurations, because, you know, as we've talked about with all the IT issues in town, our radio communications is also something that becomes computerized and digitized, so that communication and that networking by Star is crucial to this. So you'll see that is provided inside of this quote. And also, there's some work to, to do the microwave links, as well as that installation by Marcus. So this is an all-inclusive quote for that work that they need to do to get this tower up and running. And again, this is kind of thrown on us last minute, not knowing how long this project, which has been waiting for several years, you know, was gonna take to be completed, they just came to us recently to say, okay, we're ready to go with this. Unfortunately, you know, I think there was some confusion when this was first discussed, and my communications of, of exactly what was needed, we finally had been able to finalize that with, with the communications people, and that's what's presented to you tonight.
There are questions on the Board of Selectmen? I think, I think you were all surveying at the time when Marcus Communications came in and made the presentation, and you authorized me to get into this contract with Marcus, as it would be providing a needed cell site, a tower site, in the north part of town, something we didn't have, and we desperately needed, and would save us significant money, and it still will. Again, I think you all remember that, you should, and this is now being brought to us as it's finally being done.
This is Kevin Serra, I'll move the following. Move to appropriate and transfer $19,118 from CNRE fund account 32-70-300-500-999, Townwide Projects, to an account to be established, town radio, tower, infrastructure, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This resolution is passed under the guidance of Executive Order 7-S, with no town meeting being required and being less than 10% of the current budget.
Mark Salerno, second.
Mark Salerno, second. Are there any other comments or questions?
Just a comment, I can remember the days when you, at the north end of town, sometimes you'd have to go to a neighboring town or state police troop, to have them relay a message from the north end of town to our dispatch and so forth, to let them know what your situation was. So this is extremely well-needed, and that went for, not only for police, fire, and as the chief pointed out, public works, and if you had a school bus breakdown, you know, they were, you know, communications was iffy at best.
Calls from Spider Carolyn. Calls from Spider Carolyn.
Sorry.
Calls from Spider Carolyn.
She was probably trying to sell you an auto warranty.
Probably.
Okay.
I couldn't break the connection, sorry.
I understand, it's like, you just have to let it play out, and I didn't want to just, well, I didn't want to talk over that. So we, obviously, the town has a significant liability issue with our first responders, and of course, meeting the needs of our citizens up there, first responders can't communicate at the scene. But not only that, you know, our, the growth of our town is north, isn't it? So this is gonna serve us well into the next several decades, as the town expands to the north side of 95. Thank you for your help tonight, Chief. Always, always. And again, thank you for stepping into a project that was introduced, but then the personnel has changed over, and, and frankly, you had to pick the ball up and, and relearn all this, and I, I'm grateful for your service to our town, in this case especially. So we have a motion, are there any other questions?
I just, yeah, before, Chief, please, the, the equipment that's on the existing, the temporary tower, is that gonna be utilized, or what happens with that?
No, unfortunately, the, the cabling, which has been there for several years, you're really not able to use tower cable, transport it to a new, new facility and restring that. There's too many problems that happen with the kinking of it, and, you know, too much damage possibilities. So communications vendors are very, very reluctant to relocate that type of cabling, just because of the possibility of having some, you know, some malfunctions in that cable. So that's why they go with the cable.
No, I understand. What about the antenna itself? Was it, I mean, do they, is that?
No, that antenna was an old antenna that was, was repurposed for that tower, so it was nothing that was new that was purchased for that. So again, you know, we're looking to put one antenna up and have that antenna last 20-plus years, and not have to replace that, because that tower time, to pay somebody to climb up there and redo that, is a significant expense.
Yeah. And then with the new public safety complex, is what is going up on this tower gonna be compatible with the other work that we're doing now?
Absolutely. So the communications that take place from the new public safety building are all done through the state fiber. So this basically, whether we had this building or not, this was a needed project, because it closed that loop for the communications, which then goes IP-based through the fiber back into the dispatch center. So it's, it's certainly, it will complement the entire town, but, you know, does work very well with the system we have in place.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's a, that's a complex thing, the, the bouncing from tower to towers, microwave dish to microwave dish, to make it all in sync, and, and yes, it will be compatible to our new system. Any other questions? I'll call the vote, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you. Thank you again, Chief, and thank you, Lieutenant Jezerski.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. The appointment to a board commission, we talked about this last meeting, that we did move up, help me, Doreen.
Ryan.
Ryan, Ryan, maybe, to, to a full position from the board of, from the alternate position, and now we have an alternate position to fill. There was some discussion about just leaving it open for a little while, and I think for the balance, we did talk about it, should be a Republican, as we have two Democrats as alternates now, that's generally how that's done, but I'm welcome, welcome to hear any nominations from the floor, or motions.
This is Kevin Serra, I'd like to move to appoint Marjorie Mekov, 6th Cedar Ridge Road, Eastlime, is an alternate member, alternate member of the Inland Wetlands Agency, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2022.
Mark Salerno, I will second that.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Just serve out the rest of this term. Any comments?
I think you pointed out, the minority rep requires that this one has to be either an unaffiliated or a Republican, because the two remaining are Democrats.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Terrific. I told you, we'll be moving right along here, we have the meeting schedule in front of you, in your packet, I hope, I trust you all looked at it, and generally, this is not rocket science, we look at it and see if there's any major holidays that we bump into, and move them if necessary, but for the most part, this will be our regular meeting schedule. We hope by February or March, we'll be meeting live again, but that's to be determined. You know, earlier than February 17th, the second meeting in February, the governor has extended executive orders pertaining to town meetings, et cetera, through, I think, February 8th or 9th, and we intend to keep it that way. I'll let you know, if you haven't come into the town hall, before we take this motion and a vote, that we have redone the town hall, I mentioned it before, we put a new ceiling in, as those, they're not as, they're not as best as tiles, like, catch myself, but they're interlocking tiles, and if you take one out, you can't get it back in. These are regular drop ceiling tiles now, it's a nice clean look, we also changed the HVAC delivery system in that room, as it was pretty antiquated, it used to come through the, believe it or not, the fluorescent light fixture, there was a grill on the side of the light fixture, and that's where the air would come out, now it distributes more evenly and more appropriately.
More quietly.
And quietly as well, exactly. So we put new lights in, LED lights, which is, they're brighter, but they're, they're, they have the green effect, of course, so we'll save some money with that. New ceiling, new cameras, new microphones, and we just need COVID to go away, and we can start having meetings again. And I know all the commissions and boards are anxious to come together, I miss being with my compadres here, and, and we'll get there, we'll get there. So anyway, we have a, we'll need a motion to approve the regular meeting schedule for next year.
This is Kevin Serra, I move to approve the Eastline Board of Selectmen meeting schedule for 2021, as submitted.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, it's been seconded, any further comments? Anybody see any conflict at all? Great, we'll see y'all. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Terrific, no communications in our packets this evening, I don't believe, and if, if not, we'll go to ex officio reports. Mr. Cunningham, you're top on my screen here, do you want to, you want to start us off?
Yeah, I attended the Historic Properties Commission meeting last night, and they're still really pushing to, they're working on the grant for the Samuel Smith Farmstead, so they're really hoping that that can be pushed along, and, and looking forward to trying to get that approved, that would be a great thing for them.
Yes, indeed.
Work to be done there, which is, it's really kind of long, I mean, they've done an awful lot with, with not too much to, yeah, so, so that's a great thing. And let's see, oh, the Eastlime High School student website, History and Making, that's up and running, and I encourage people to go to it and look at it, and see what they're doing, and see how it links up. It sounds like a pretty nice thing that they've been working on, so proud of our high school students, and they've been working on that. So that's, that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Salerno.
Planning man, yesterday, they approved their budget, they're gonna, they put in for a special, well, they're gonna be asking for a special corporation for admin overtime, admin support, to support the Zoom meetings. That will be coming. They added that in the light item for the 21 budget. They closed the public hearing for one lot subdivision on 92 Old Black Point Road, they'll be deliberating on that the next meeting. There's, they continued the public hearing on a three-lot subdivision on Upper Kensington Road. They've, they're gonna have a special meeting on December 15th to finish the public hearing there. They re-elected Kirk Scott as chairman, and Michelle Royce Williams as secretary. And then for building, then I'm sure Paul could give more detail on the public safety building part of it, they did approve some small items on the elementary school project, there are a few things remaining, including the refinishing of the Littleby Haynes gym floor. The public safety building, they approved money to expand Silver and Petronelli's for more administration throughout the process, and for, to pay for some site visits. Chief Finkelstein presented communications and IT reports and costs for some of the work there, I know, I'll let Paul fill in any details that I didn't, I guess, that they have started some work, they were, last we checked, they were supposed to start the tunneling for the electrical and communications inside the building, so it's progressing.
Thanks, Mr. Salerno. Mr. Daigle?
Nothing really to add, Mark covered it pretty well, the building committee, but it's good to hear, and I haven't seen it personally yet, but the fact that they've started the work inside the building, so, you know, just, they're currently working on a schedule that's gonna have the, the building complete in mid-June timeframe, so pending any problems, they're anxious, and they think they, if things fall into place, they may even be able to beat that schedule by a little bit, so good news there. Other than that, there were no other, I had no other commission members, meetings. I will state, but there's a, you know, I'm not promoting the Brian Daigle Foundation, but the Brian Daigle Foundation is, is supporting a, a family activity, scavenger hunt, Bellswood, Bells with the Bells, which could be, we just, they just decided to extend that to the end of December, so families in town that are looking for a family function to do, it'll be something to do if they don't get it to a before Christmas, maybe after Christmas, when the kids are home, and you get a nice couple days, they can get out and participate, we're, we're working, that's working in conjunction with the Children's Museum, so more information's available on our website, and hopefully, it's an activity that members of our community can enjoy, so. That's all I had to report, Mark, thank you.
Thank you. I just wrote that down, I'll look that, I'll look into that after the meeting, thank you very much. Roseanne, do you have a report tonight?
I do, very brief. Zoning Commission will meet tomorrow evening. The public hearing, which I had mentioned at the last meeting, last ex officio report, the public hearing, has been closed, so there's no further input from the public on the two very important items on their agenda tomorrow night. That would be the zoning, that would be the landmark application for a text amendment, and what they would like to, what they are requesting is they want to replace the application requirements, which they previously came in with for their development, which required a preliminary site plan, and then a final site plan. And they want a text amendment to allow them to replace those requirements with a master plan procedure, which would be the same as what was used in the gateway application. And there is quite a difference between the requirements of the preliminary site and a final site plan versus the master plan procedure. The second agenda item is Pezaglia Construction, I was requesting a rezoning of 20.4 acres. They want, it's currently zoned as RU80 and RU40, and they want that changed to affordable residential housing on the westerly side of Northbrook Road, and this would be a change from what was originally proposed, which were condo units. The project would be entitled Brookside Apartments, and these would all be rental units. And so it's going to be, I think, a rather lengthy meeting tomorrow night, but these are certainly two very important applications, which really set the tone, because they are requesting significant changes to the regulations, both of those applicants, and I think it kind of sets the tone for future development.
Yes, indeed.
So that's, that's it.
Yeah, that's going onto the Affordable 8-30G, using the state statute, is that, am I right with that?
Yes, that's the request.
Yeah, so zoning will have their hands tied, at least one hand tied behind their back, as they approach this application, as typical of a 8-30G affordable housing application. As we have witnessed through the last couple decades. Kevin, I know, I think you're last but not least.
I, Parks Director doesn't meet till a week from tomorrow, week from tomorrow, so nothing for that, but Dan Cunningham, Mark Salerno, are meeting next Monday, I'm gonna post the agenda tomorrow for that fire subcommittee we're on, so we're gonna start, just to kick off meeting on that next Monday. That's it.
Okay. My, my report, I'll try to make it brief as well, I'm not ex officio, as you know, I'm chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission, we are working hard to negotiate the tri-town agreement, the last time it was put together was the first time it was put together, and that was 30 years ago. There's a lot of tweaking that needs to happen, but also, an evolution of thinking, and the evolution of the relationship, especially where Old Lime is getting involved now, will still be a tri-town agreement, but then New London made a side deal with, with Old Lime to accept some affluent sewage capacity, if you will, that we will transport through. So they're much more complicated, after we get done with the tri-town, there's the buy-town agreement, because Waterford and Eastlime have a compact as well, again, because they act in a, well, everything flows through Waterford, so we have a capital, shared capital expenses, et cetera. We're working through that, and we get close, and then we get farther back, we take one step forward and about 15 steps back sometimes, but lawyers are busy on that one now. Anyway, there'll be a light parade this year, it'll be a backwards light parade, it's 2020, it's bizarro world, everything's backwards, so the floats stay in place, and the people drive through the, the floats, and it'll be up at McCooks Park, you'll see more details about it on Facebook as we get a little closer, I'm sure the newspaper will do an article. I asked some of you folks, Selectmen, if you'd like to get together and be together that night, I don't know if that was received, I know Roseanne has an obligation, but if we want to be at the end of the parade, we don't have to have a float, we can just be there with a sign and waving, I'll be up there anyway, but, you know, maybe you can just, maybe, maybe that's not a point of discussion for our meeting, but contact me offline, individually, let me know if you think it's a good idea, if you want to do something like that. It's been a tough year, it'd be nice to be outside and see people. Fishing dock leases, you know, the applications went out, they went out as planned, we advertised, as, as we discussed, and I think those applications will do this Friday, by end of business, this Friday, so I'd ask the fishing dock lease subcommittee to get together early next week, and determine what you're gonna do with that. Okay, any questions, by all means, call my office. Mr. Salerno mentioned the additional need for administrative funding through the land use commissions. Going to Zoom for us has been relatively easy, our agendas aren't heavy with presentations and public comments, like they are, especially in a controversial land use application. And I gotta tell you, planning, zoning, wetlands, the three of them have had nothing but heavily attended public, public hearings, and publicly attended attended public, public hearings and publicly, publicly attended meetings, which requires, you know, the muting and bringing people in and acknowledging and chat rooms and all this other stuff. So it was decided, and frankly, we're following the lead of many other towns that have done the same thing, is bringing an additional admin into the meeting to actually just work the meeting. Where in a meeting like this, I can control the meeting, and I can make someone a co-host. But in this zoning meeting, or especially in some of the wetlands meetings that have been occurring, there's a lot going on. And as you know, there's a lot going on that also has legal consequences. Many of the applications and decisions get appealed and get reviewed by lawyers, and these kind of things need to go by way of protocol and, and be run properly and let everyone have a say at a public meeting and make sure the applicant who's paid his fee, is it her fee, also gets their, their fair shake and the proper presentation. So not extraordinary request at all. And Jen Lindo, who does a whole lot of work for us, and she is the full-timer down in the building department, and you know Jen, everyone knows Jen, she's very knowledgeable as well. She's been attending planning, zoning, and inland wetlands meetings, and we've burned through some of our extra part-time or overtime money. We're gonna be coming back to you for administrative needs. We've added on as much comp time as possible by way of her union contract, and she's frankly maxed that out as well. So where I would normally have Bill Mahallen or Gary run the meeting or the chairs, there's a lot going on, and it is, is proper that we have our own administrator. She's been doing it since April. We also thought this would be a three-month gig, right? We also thought, you know, COVID, we'll be back in July. And here we are, rounding the turn to the end of the year, and we know we're at least going through February with this, and we know that the worst is actually yet to come, if you believe what I saw on the news this, this evening. So we need to properly plan for this, and it will be in the budget for next year, should this continue. I don't think that's gonna be necessary, but I said that last year. So that's coming your way. I just wanted to clarify that, Mark, and I know you sat in on that meeting, and I've had some discussions and had some discussions with other CEOs of other towns. I've also sat in several meetings over the last several days and even weeks on COVID. I've been doing that for months, but now we're talking vaccine, and now we're talking distribution, and now we're talking, you know, the vaccinators and the non-vaccinators, and how we can create a campaign to try to get as many people vaccinated as possible. And, and, and maybe, I'll, I'll ask some of the selectmen to, if you're so inclined to maybe participate in a photo op, saying we post that on our website that we're getting vaccinated when the time comes. There is a lot of discussion about who's gonna get it first. And, you know, the follow-up, it's a two-shot process, so it needs to be done, and it needs to be done in a narrow window, like 14 days, not, not 17 days, not 12 days. So there's a lot of that, and I guess you can't do a drive-through either. You have to go in, sit down, and it's a whole process. You'll get the vaccination, and then you have to sit there for 10 or 15 minutes as they monitor your vitals, et cetera. So lots going on. The health districts are working tightly with the Department of Health, with CDC. As, as you know, CDC recommendations changes to today on the quarantine requirements. You may want to follow up on that. But, but the, the administration of the vaccine is very important, obviously, first responders, obviously, those who work in healthcare facilities, we're seeing a spike in East Line, like all over southeastern Connecticut in the last week. I know of two people who have passed away in our town. They both were in long-term care facilities in our town, and they passed away. I fear that we're gonna have another surge like we did in the spring, and, and hopefully we can put that to, to rest when this vaccine comes out. There's, there's a lot of discussion about how that will go. You know, seat bus drivers, you know, people who serve our communities in different formats, you know, our, our public works crews, you know, if, if, if they, they're, they're not first responders, but they are when the snow's falling. And, and, and that's very, very important, especially when you're trying to get an ambulance through town, and you get two feet of snow out, and you can't get enough plow drivers in because it just ripped through your town garage. So lots of discussion happening, and the CEOs, I volunteered as, as chairman of the Council of Governments to organize the chief elected officials of all the towns to come together to build a roster, to build a priority roster that we will figure out the distribution properly. So more to come on that. Okay. Lastly, I got my hip replaced a week and a half ago. I just want to say thank you to all the well wishers and, and my gratitude to the Board of Selectmen who reached out and wished me well. I had an amazing experience, four hours in the, in the surgery center over at Cross Road, and came out, walked to the car, walked into the house, walked upstairs to my bed that night. And, you know, I'm still on the mend. I'm not supposed to overdo it, but, you know, I walked the boardwalk within the first week and two miles, and, and I have full permission to go back to the gym and, and exercise cautiously, and, and it's kind of cool. But, but the message for, for me is a, a, a deep gratitude for all those that reached out and wished me well, especially the Board of Selectmen who are here this evening. And, and we have, we live in a great town that's so supportive and so full of, you know, support and, and, and positive attitude, and I'm just, I'm a lucky man to, to have this experience over the last 21, it's going on 22 years in town government, beginning next week. So that's all I have tonight. Does anyone have any questions for me on my report?
Yes, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I wonder, I wonder if at our next meeting, which I guess will be next year, because I think we only meet once this month.
I'm not sure if that's the truth. No, we have 16 schedules.
Okay, then we'll, I guess we'll be here then.
But tell me.
Somehow I, somehow I was thinking that we only met once in December, but that's fine. We always have plenty to talk about. I wonder if you could give us an update on, from the Water and Sewer Commission, on the water usage and how much that is costing us with the exchange with New London between the two seasons. I don't know if those figures are available yet from our summer usage and the exchange, but I'd like to have that information at the next meeting when you report. And also, I requested a couple of meetings ago that the board get the printout that we generally have gotten in the past, the monthly printout from our financial director on our, the current statement on, on the different accounts in town, the different departments.
You, you mean the year-to-date expenditures?
Yes.
Could we send that to you electronically, so it can be somewhat thick and the six of us?
That's fine.
While we send it to you, we can, the Board, the Board of Finance gets it every month, and no, no problem sending it to you as well. And, and I'll, we'll send it out, I think, tomorrow or the next day, just because it'll be going out to finance anyway, but we'll make that, not the packet and not the agenda, but absolutely will update you on where we are for spending.
Well, it would go to the whole board, wouldn't it?
Yes, that's.
Yep. Okay.
I meant collective you. Yes. Yes, indeed. If I don't have the water usage, if I can't get Joe at the meeting on the 16th, it'll be first meeting of January, but we can update you what this year's costs were, if you will. It's, it's built into the rate, it's, we could talk about the gallons and just multiply the gallons up by the dollars per gallon. And of course, we send them, send the water back this time of year. We did take a substantial amount of water this year, because we have our, one of our wells is closed, because we're putting the, the green filter on it. So we had a delay there, plus we had a little bit of a drought, so we took a substantial amount of water this year. So we'll, we'll, we'll have you, we'll get a report to you in the next, within the next couple of meetings. Okay?
Mark, when is, on that note, when is the filter supposed to be complete, and everything, where we're not taking the London water to supplement?
I, I don't have a schedule on when that filter's gonna be complete. I know they're, they're working on it. I mean, COVID helped quite a bit. They were able to really get in there and dig in there and, and get it done. They've been working on it. I don't have a completion date off the top of my head. But that'll be part, why don't we make that part of the discussion? If we have Joe here, you'll know the answer.
Thanks.
I, I know it will, I know we'll, we'll have a Little League season next year.
Little League season will be good. Less New London water in the winter would be good, too.
Will you have one in Little League still?
Have what? No, no, high school. Oh, my daughter, my daughter just, no, well, junior softball possibly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. All right. And we're gonna, we configure the parking down there as well, that where we had, I think we call that parallel parking, where there's a curb and you put your cars, yeah, parallel. I, we're gonna, I think we're gonna angle it in so we can fit more cars, and we're extending the pavement out a little bit. And we're also, if you've been down there, and I know you all have at one point, there's a lot of severe puddles down there. We never really had a drainage system down there. So we're going to, I think they're not curbing it. I think they're going to slope it properly so the rainwater, so we don't have the puddles. We had a big puddle problem down there, so it just looked awful. And it's terrible when you're parking your car and you're stepping out into three inches of, of water. So that's gonna be fixed as part of the project. So whenever Joe, Bragon, his crew go into any kind of a project, they're always looking for the, you know, other opportunities to make improvements, and they've done a great job over the years on my tenure. We'll, we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public? Okay, if not, the selectman's response is a big zero, I think, since there was no comment, so.
I will move to adjourn the December 2nd regular meeting on the Board of Selectmen at 8:15 PM.
Great. We still manage 45 minutes. How about that? Is there a second?
Paul Dagel, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I, I'm not sure we'll have a meeting on the 16th. It depends on if we have enough content for the meeting. Roseanne, you're right, by the second meeting in December, we don't often have the content. We're gearing up for the next half of the year. So if I don't see you, Merry Christmas and happy holidays, and if not, we'll see you on the 16th, two weeks.
Mark, we need to do the docs.
Then we'll be here on the 16th. Thank you.
All right.
We'll all bring our own eggnog, and, you know, the, the Council of Governments is having, we've adjourned, so I, we can't go deep here, but we're having a contest where we're all gonna decorate, we're all gonna show up in our holiday garb, and the, the, the guy who's, or the gal who's, you know, dressed up like an elf or a Santa or something might win a prize. So we could consider doing that on the 16th of December. I could see you, Salerno.
Yeah.
Y'all, that's it for tonight. Thank you all. Have a good evening. Stay safe.
You as well.
COVID thing has taken off, so please stay safe. Stay away from everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Stay out of the men, Mark.